Good evening and welcome to the March 2015 meeting of the Morgan and Planning and Zoning Commission. For those that are either in the audience or on TV, just a quick word about our commission. We are eleven members that are appointed. We're volunteers. We work to provide advice and counsel to the city council on issues that deal with planning, land planning and land uses. And I would like to welcome our auspicious members for the commission back for this year. And as we roll into the 2015 land use planning season, tonight's new business, we have minutes from our old meeting of October 9th. You should have received a copy of those and you have a chance to review those, any comments, corrections, deletions or additions. Seeing none, move that those are approved. Under the next item, we have a review of city council action since our last meeting. Do you have any input there, Lee, for us?
Yeah, it's been awhile since this commission's met. Welcome back. This is our first meeting since the new ordinance was adopted by the city council. We're operating under a new zoning ordinance and zoning map effective January 1 of this year. The Burke County Board of Commissioners adopted their new sections of the area of the ETJ that was released by us in February, and so the new boundaries are in effect. And we've been issuing permits and zoning permits and site plan approvals through the new ordinance for the past two and a half months. So, things seem to be going fairly smooth with the new ordinance. I'm pleased. We were talking a little bit about it before the meeting. I'm pleased that it's been received very well so far. I'm sure that we'll run into some bumps in the road, just like we had an ordinance amendment tonight. I think over time, we'll probably see and flush out some of the inconsistencies. We're getting a lot of feedback in here. But the ordinance does seem to be working the way we anticipated it to work. We're starting to get some site plans in that are more involved in corridor areas, so we'll see how those work with our design guidelines and things like that. We've done some smaller projects, but nothing large. We're gonna have a larger project coming in fairly soon, I understand. So, hopefully that'll go smooth for folks. There seems to be at least appreciation for the ability to look at different options on the property that maybe weren't there originally and under the old ordinance. So, that's a good thing. That's one of the goals that we had, and we'll see as time goes on how well we did. It takes awhile for that, these kind of things, to show up. The city council also held a workshop in February, and there was a couple items taken up that would be of interest to the planning commission. The first being the adaptive reuse or reuse study that is currently underway for Broughton Hospital. Dr. Pat Mitchell, the Assistant Secretary of Commerce, was with us in our council workshop this year. She attended all day. There was a very large group of folks that were in our council workshop. It was probably one of the best council workshops that I've been involved with in probably twenty-seven years that I've been here. It's a lot of enthusiasm for economic development. We talked some about the new zoning ordinance, and we talked about some of the initiatives that the city had underway to try to partner with other agencies, Burke County, of course, and other municipalities in the county, along with the state of North Carolina. Just for your information, the North Carolina General Assembly last year adopted a bill to appropriate funds for an adaptive reuse study of the Broughton campus. They, with the building of the new hospital, they will be abandoning 1.2 million square feet of buildings on the historic campus. And we, along with Burke County and others, have been approaching the state for about a year now. And there was a grassroots group that formed about two years ago to encourage that, the state of North Carolina, to actively look at new ideas for that campus and what we can do. We did not want to see the buildings go into decline with the construction of the new facility. So, the opportunities that present themselves there, I think, are tremendous for this community. We have, I think, at least raised attention to it on the Department of Commerce. They have taken a lead role in it, in the study. They've drawn in the North Carolina School of Government and the Development Finance Initiative, folks who do public-private partnerships of how to best reuse the campus for economic development purposes in the future. And so, over the next twelve months, we'll be engaged in that process to find adaptive reuse and at least start the process. Based on what we're hearing, we've got a couple years before the new hospital is completed, so there's a little bit of time to move forward and with the state's assistance, I think, could be the, one of the best economic development projects in western North Carolina before it's over and done. Because the campus doesn't just affect us, it affects people from all over western North Carolina that's worked and come into the area for employment for over a hundred years. So, this establishment has a lot to do with economics in this part of the state. So, I'll keep you informed as we move forward. The planning commission, if you recall, when we zoned the area to state institutional district, all of state lands are now under that zoning, and so that's gonna come into play also of how that gets brought into the fold of new development. And as private enterprise perhaps maybe gets engaged in that, some of those changes might need to take place with the new ordinance. And so, I think it'll work hand in hand, and I think it'll be a very good process as we move along.
Lee, what kind of square footage is it? Is it like rooms? Is it office space? What is it?
Broughton Hospital is a pretty unique building. In fact, I've had an opportunity to tour the facility. The old Avery Building, beautiful building, but very small rooms or treatment rooms, basically. It's not your typical old school or anything. I mean, these are large concrete, thick walls. It'll be a challenging architecture to work within in some of the buildings. Some of the buildings are, of course, just office spaces, and there are classrooms, and there's store space in there and warehouses. There's just all kinds of different types of buildings on the campus. And, of course, there's a lot of vacant land in and around the campus. And the study really indicates that it includes not only the Broughton campus, but that we're supposed to be looking at the potential for the North Carolina School for the Deaf and the adjoining government-owned properties are being opened up to potentially be looked at. Western Peatmont Community College, the Riddle Center, the city has properties, the county has properties, the state of North Carolina Department of Transportation has properties that they've acquired through the Enola Road widening process. And so, all in all, the study area is almost 1,200 acres. So, it's a, what the Department of Commerce is describing as a mega site in western North Carolina with tremendous healthcare resources that are already clustered in this area that's probably very unique in this country, to have that many special needs, healthcare-related professional services and educational facilities within a stone's throw of each other. And so, all of that combined is what this study is taking in consideration. And interstate frontage, two major new interchanges being built. It's primed for something new. Could be, like I said, a game changer for the demographics of this community and this county, and a very exciting project.
Any other questions, comments for Lee? All right. Moving on, under our agenda, we have space allotted for appearances, and that's for anyone in our audience that would like to address a planning issue, land use, that's not on our agenda. And seeing nobody, we will move forward to our first item of business, and only new business, which is consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment to our recently approved zoning ordinance. And this applies to Section 3.4.2, I reckon it's paragraph Delta 3, to clarify the conditions by which family care homes may be established. Lee, if you could walk us through that, please.
Okay. Section 3.4.2 deals with family care homes. Family care homes are permitted use within all zoning districts except industrial uses, which does not permit residential of any nature in our exclusive industrial districts. One of the conditions that was written in the ordinance was a provision that's allowed by the North Carolina statutes to have a half-mile spacing requirement between a family care home. A family care home is defined as a facility that... Just a second. I'll bring that up on the screen so you can see it. Maybe I'm lucky. Family care home is a residential use of property that allows residential living conditions for up to five... No, that's not the right page. There we go. In accordance with the general statutes, no more than six residents residing within the family care home. The family care home must be licensed by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It cannot be located currently within a half-mile radius of any other family care home. There's no signage permitted, and no lockdown violent or dangerous residents can be permitted within the family care home, and only incidental or occasional medical care may be provided. They have 24-hour staffing that comes into these homes, again, for no more than six residents, unrelated residents. They are operated by the state of North Carolina, and we have quite a few of those in our community. The current ordinance, the way it was written, the half-mile spacing requirement applies to all zoning districts except the exclusive industrial district. The way the previous ordinance worked is that half-mile spacing really only applied in residential areas. It didn't apply in office institutional areas, general business areas, central business areas, any type of commercial zoning classification. You could operate them side by side if you wanted to, that you could build these facilities as close as you wanted to. The half-mile spacing requirement was really incorporated into, in the residential areas to try to space out so that there's not a substantial number of them that show up in one neighborhood. So, the recommended change is to amend the ordinance to only place the half-mile spacing requirement within the low-intensity zoning area, which is primarily residential in use, and to also place it within neighborhood conservation areas. So, primarily our single-family areas, although LID does allow some multifamily, but it's our lower-density zoning designation, designated areas. And so, the amendment would basically change item three to also say only within LID and neighborhood conservation areas. So, the ordinance amendment was in your package, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
How did this be raised as an item of attention?
There was a piece of property that's in, that was in the central business district, and now it's in the medium-intensity district. And there's existing family care homes in the area, and they were wanting to utilize another one of the homes as a family care home. And so, when we spoke to them about that, it kind of surprised us on the staff level that it would not be permitted in that location. And so, we offered to take it through the amendment process. If it's something that we felt like it was not intended in the new ordinance, I think that we'll do that as the city. We'll recognize that and try to bring that through. If it's something that we intended to be in the ordinance, but someone wants to make application to change it, then, you know, that will require them to go through the standard application process and be the face of the application so that they can come in and make the argument for what they're asking for.
And then, again, the current verbiage that's in the existing ordinance, which is now this paragraph D3?
It says all residential districts. In the current ordinance, it says all districts. In the previous ordinance, it was all residential districts. And so, we really don't have, under the new rules, we don't break it down into residential districts and commercial districts. We have intensity districts. There's low intensity, medium intensity, high intensity. Residential is allowed in all of those districts. So, if you prevent it in all of those, you prevent it everywhere, because it also allows offices and businesses and all kind of things in those areas. So, they're more conditioned-based type districts now, not use-based. So, that's... And we'll find, we'll find things like that as we, as people come in and ask questions. We're gonna find more of these. I mean, there's this, we spent a year on it, but there was a lot of changes, as you all know.
Three thousand pages, huh?
So, we don't want to be too restrictive for family care homes. We do have a lot of those in our, because, in our area because of the institutions, and probably more than most communities have, actually.
So, would you determine that radius, if we have one existing or one's gonna be going into the low-intensity?
Mm-hmm.
Would that radius, when you place that radius on the map, if it hits another group home or family care home, but it's not in a low-intensity district, would that knock that one out? Do you see what I'm saying? Because we have so many, our districts are so overlapping now. I mean...
If it was in a low-intensity area, and you could draw a circle, a half-mile circle around that site, then if there was non-existing family care home within that half-mile radius, then you could locate it in that property. The state of North Carolina does not allow you to prohibit family care homes. That's, I mean, they look at these as a, as a single-family home. But they still have in the general statutes the half-mile spacing requirement for the purpose of not trying to stack them all up together. So, that's the allowance, and I believe I included that in...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, they're going to...
Yeah, as, under the last paragraph A, a political subdivision may prohibit a family care home from being located within one-half-mile radius of an existing family care home. So, that's still in the general statutes, and it's still an allowance, so...
I think its intent is to preserve the character of a neighborhood so that you don't have, like you say, any particular homes.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions for Lee? Would someone like to pose a motion?
Do that we adopt as recommended.
Okay. I have a motion to, again, this is to amend our zoning ordinance to include the language as specified, that no family care home may be located within a low-intensity district or within a neighborhood conservation overlay if it is within one-half-mile radius of any other family care home. So, I have that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion further? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. That goes to the city council at their next meeting in April. Okay, that's... I did not look at the date on that. Okay, here's nine April, is it?
April 6th.
No, it's our next meeting.
April 3rd, I believe is the first Thursday in April at 6:00 P.M.
Other items for discussion is our next...
First Monday in April.
Six.
Agenda item. I, having not participated in the Affordable Housing Task Ward, I'd like to see if one of our members that did participate could give us kind of a summary under other items of discussion. Would anyone like to volunteer?
Let me help them out a little bit. We did have, I pulled that up. You may recall at your October public hearing with the new ordinance, there was a recommendation for approval for the new ordinance, but to remove the amortization of mobile, it was of non-conforming mobile home parks, and to request that the city council establish a committee to study the effects of that and whether or not that was something that needed to take place and to be brought back up for approval by the city council. City council listened to you. They did appoint an eight-member task force. Marla Black, Tim Norman, Waits Gordon, Bill Lennon, Mark Henry, Tom Bland, Clint Lidle, Judy Francis and Mike Irvin were on the committee. They represented not only the planning commission, but a pretty broad base of interest in this topic, from mobile home park owners to landlords to real estate to affordable housing and housing authority, the religious, nonprofit groups. And there was a lot of discussion. I've included the final report in your package. It's, I think it's very detailed. It tells you basically everything that was discussed, summarizes what took place in the meeting and the findings of that group. That was presented back to the city council at their workshop in February, on February the 20th. In fact, the News Herald ran a fairly large article on that the next day and talked about the conditions, and so I, there was a lot of questions about it. But the task force members felt, at the end of the study, that it would be best not to enact an amortization policy to bring the mobile home parks into compliance, primarily because of the impact to that population that resides within the parks, that it is often housing of last resort, and that the ability for the community to absorb those individuals into other means of housing was not in place, be it because of their legal status, or because of prior criminal history, or because of inability to afford other housing. But if, they felt like that if that took place, that there would be potential for greater homelessness in this community. And they encouraged the city to obviously deal with some of the issues that they were seeing as far as negative to the neighborhoods and to the residents of the park, but they did not feel strong enough to move forward, to ask that sometimes 10 or 11 units per acre be brought down to four units per acre in some of these parks. Obviously, there was some dissension in some of that within the group. It wasn't a unanimous vote by the task force, but that was presented to the city council, and they chose to follow the advice, or at least the recommendation of the committee. And so, we will continue to utilize the tools that we have in place and try to encourage the landlords to do a better job managing their parks, which is really what was established as the primary problem, is not necessarily the number of units per acre, but the way or the neglectful conditions that landlords allow their parks to become. And that creates problems in itself. They allow tenants that are causing problems to remain in place. They allow conditions that disrupt the neighborhood to stay in place, whether it's nuisance problems on the outside or the inside. And so, that's gonna be a continuous problem, and we will be watching landlords, we'll make sure that they're not creating problems, and we'll try to do everything we can to solve those conditions under the rules that we have in place. If you know of problems in the community, the best thing to do is contact Public Safety. We had all the, there's, in the report, it talks about the calls to the various parks, how many there were. One of the parks had, I think, 98 public safety calls to it last year. So, that's a problem. But, you know, we have apartment buildings that have similar situations. We have hotel establishments that have similar situations. So, that's, it's not just in the mobile home parks. We can, we can kind of point to other uses, and we need to do a better job addressing all of those.
Lee, amortization is how everything got tagged, like it was an anti-amortization process that we were, which I found it to be a very complex situation. There's so many tentacles in this thing that they're reaching out that you really didn't hear about until you hear the people that are involved in it. And the only thing I was disappointed in, we don't have some kind of start, whether it's 10 years, 15 years. In 30 years from now, we did a Morganton 2030 study, and the year 2060, we're probably gonna be looking at still some of the same things that are out there today. So, that was the disappointment in the whole thing, but there, it's so complex, there's so many things involved in it, it was really hard to at least not get something started along the lines. So, we're hopeful that Public Safety can change things out there a little bit, and that the landlords will really get on board, and that's the people we were directing at, not the people that were living there.
Yeah, I think that was one of the takeaways for me, but rather than look to Public Safety to kind of magically fix these problems, I really am hoping that city council will take some responsibility for being more proactive in encouraging and facilitating an expanded range of options for affordable housing in Morganton. Because the reason that I voted for this recommendation was not because I don't want mobile home parks to go away, particularly the bad ones. I'm not a fan of mobile home parks for the most part. But these, there are many people who have no other option for living, and I just did not feel like Morganton, at this point in time, was in a position to say, "We don't care what happens to those people anymore." I just didn't feel like we had done as best as we could to provide other options. When those other options are available, I will be more than happy to amortize mobile home parks, believe me.
And I would just say that Lee has summarized things quite well as to the process, the several meetings that we did have in that regard. And the problem is exasperated, exasperated, exacerbated by the fact that in many of the home, mobile home parks, you now have resident owners. It's not, the actual owner of the park is basically leasing land rights rather than the actual trailer or mobile home facility that might be there. And so, you're really, as you're saying there, you're displacing the person who is most vulnerable to that. At the same time, there were also, you know, a couple of things to look at, perhaps, that might be done by another group as to, you know, the public safety calls, those types of things. That even has a two-edged type of thing. I was personally looking at, well, you know, if you've got a high incident call area, is there some way to take an action or a regard? call area, uh, is there some way to take an, an action or a uh, regard in that? Uh, but by the same token, you had some park owners that were very pro-call oriented to public safety versus if you impose some sort of penalty or something like that monetary wise, then uh, they don't make the calls and you have a worse problem that can create uh, out of that. But I would echo somewhat what uh, uh, Mr. Gordon has said here is to um, not having taken an action to at least start that process. Uh, we have another twenty-thirty plan, you know, that will be out there, another exercise in doing the, the plan after that. And for me, we're looking at um, not doing something necessarily perhaps to, to move that forward uh, in that time. And also you have some existing properties that uh, yes, they can be kept up well, but again, if uh, a person is marginally uh, getting by economically anyway, they're not gonna reinvest in the properties the way that we might like them to invest in maintaining their, their home or their unit. They just can't do it. Uh, so you have a situation where, you know, another fifteen years from now, you have um, mobile home facilities and parks that may be forty-five years old. And um, what condition are those in? So uh, you know, it's, it's a matter of starting or not starting something and certainly I think um, you know, that the route was chosen not to hurt those who were most vulnerable and I certainly had that feeling also. I just felt like you have to start somewhere and hopefully the city council will do that. But I think it was also pointed out, uh, you know, this particular uh, task force was looking at um, mobile home parks and, but we also have, as Lee has said, existing properties around the city. Many of those are independently owned, they're not being kept up. Uh, some of that is because of persons who own them passing uh, away. Uh, in some cases, they are being kept up by family or estates. Other cases, they're being abandoned. Uh, we have to have, I think, a, a, a city position that, as you said, comes about that how do we find these, these opportunities, these options, these, these other ways to do things? And I would hope that would be a high priority for any council uh, going forward.
Well, points again, I, I, I'm like Judy, I think this, the issue is a, it's a people issue. And you've got kind of three different sides of the issue. You've got, you've got your uh, landlords, your park owners. It's a very viable business model, certainly understand where they're coming from. You have people that benefit from the uh, advantages or benefits that, that mobile home owner provides them as far as a place to live. And then there's the other party that you said, it's, it's an owner of a mobile home. But as the home ages, as they age, either on fixed income or cannot afford to upgrade or keep the place up, what happens to them? So that's, that to me is a major issue that has to be addressed in it. Otherwise, if we don't address it or try to take a proactive uh, approach, then the problem's gonna be here at our next twenty-thirty plan. And so I hope the city council will stay on top of it as plus the city staff keep creating. Cause uh, my question to Lee would be is that as a, as a mobile home reaches its uh, beyond economic repair sta- uh, position, what do we do? I mean, do you have to pull the home out? Is that an opportunity for the park owner then to say, okay, that land, we're not gonna put another unit in or if you do, it's gotta meet certain criteria?
Well, it definitely has to meet the, the, the criteria of a ninety-three or newer. That was left in. So if it once removed, the new unit has to be a ninety-three or newer unit and it has to meet the, the current HUD standards and the setup standards for North Carolina, building code wise. Um, and so over time, um, some of the, some of the units will be replaced with a better unit. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to be replaced though. I mean, that, that's, that's really where the problem lies is that the, the, the minimum housing program has been weakened so much by the North Carolina General Assembly that the, the ability for us to go in and, and enforce changes in an existing condition has gotten very, very difficult legally to, to accomplish that. Um, let's not say it can't be. I mean, if we can prove that there's life safety issues there and if it, if it, if the conditions are, are, are unsafe for the occupant and we have proof that we know that that's an unsafe living environment, then we can, we can enforce, we can still enforce codes. I mean, we're still in the business to try to protect the health, safety and general welfare of the public. But the ability for us to find those, because it's on the inside. I mean, it's, yeah, the outside may look mad, but sometimes the inside looks worse. And, and, and it could be holes in the floor, there could be electrical wires exposed, there could be uh, plumbing issues. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we see, but you can't see that from the outside. And when we did away with our rental housing program or our rental registration program, we can no longer require the landlord to m- to let us in uh, on a routine basis to where we can check that. Or if uh, the power gets switched over in somebody's name, we can't require them to allow us to inspect it. So that's, you almost either have to have a complaint by the occupant or multiple complaints by the uh, folks that are living in the area saying, this is a problem, you guys really need to take a look at that. State law says we have to have five complaints. Now, the occupant can ask us to come in, the uh, landlord can ask us to come in and we'll be happy to do a free inspection. But until it, if, for example, the occupant's worried about being displaced, if we come in and say, yeah, you're living in a really bad condition, uh, we're gonna not allow you to live here anymore, then what options does that individual have? I mean, at least he has a roof over his head right now. But if we say, yeah, you're in a dangerous condition, you're gonna have to find another place to live, not only puts us in a bad position that we're displacing that individual, even though we might be protecting their lives because they might electrocute one of their children because of exposed wires or, or a panel box that's standing wide open or holes in the floor or unsanitary conditions that are there. I mean, we, we would generally make them fix all that, but the landlord, he, he could choo- he can choose not to fix it, but he might lose his occupant.
Would there be such a thing on these ninety-eight public safety calls that maybe fifty of them are actually, they enter the property to talk to the people that are in the dispute? That some type of uh?
Well, that's one of the things that we're, we're working closer with the public safety department to determine, because they have authorities that we don't have. Uh, if, 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 if a property is determined to be um, a nuisance from a public safety standpoint and, and Louis gone, but um, if it's a, if it's a known drug house or there's illegal activities that are continuously occurring there, then they can seize that property. Uh, there's, there's a process to where, and we've done that in the past in certain locations, but normally public safety is the lead on that. It's not through zoning or building inspections a lot of times, it's through public safety nuisance properties, uh, and, and so those kind of things.
I was concerned more in their report that they file when they go there. If they see an unsafe condition and there's children living in that property and so forth, or they, while they're there filling out their reports, if there's any way in there that some issues could be brought to you like?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Any documentation that we have that shows that we have unsafe conditions, I mean, obviously public safety's not trained to be a building inspector.
Right.
But if they see obvious things, that would be, that would be something that we would have to, you know, set up our lines of communication to make sure that they communicate with, with the inspections office, um, those items. And, and I feel like that they do, if they see something that's this awful uh, situation, I'm sure that they would let us know, but um, that's gonna just continue, this requires more dialect uh, conversations to go.
That wouldn't be just mobile homes. I mean, there's plenty of stick built homes and the stalemate.
Oh, yeah.
The fireplace is as bad as those trailers are.
That would be one thing else I would just add. I mean, it's, it's, it's not that the city council is not uh, aware of this and to some degree um, is looking at it. I believe either late last summer or, or fall, uh, the entire city council along with some key staff, uh, took a tour of the city, basically looking at properties, not just commercial properties, but also residential properties as to condition uh, overall, you know, area uh, types of things. And um, while this task force was directed in one, you know, major area, um, certainly they're aware of it and I think very much um, concerned with it. I'm not sure how much came out of the planning uh, session because I was not able to attend that one. But I would hope as, as you said, that we over time would not just, you know, simply walk away from this situation, that we would look at all other options and things as um, as far as um, the possibility of public private partnerships, anything like that that might be out there along with um, whatever enforcement we can for the, as, as has been said, the, the public health and, and private uh, well-being of those people, whether they are owners or renters. So. Daylighting the issue, I think is a good first step. I mean, we've at least identified that there's, there's issues out there that need to be addressed, that are not easy problems, but we've at least indicated this is why the problem exists and this is why it's not being, you know, when somebody says, hey, that's a, that's a, why aren't you doing something with this in my neighborhood? I think we at least, we've examined it enough now to have a, I can give everybody this report and say, this is the situation that we have, at least in the parks.
Is there a plan to follow up? I mean, you know, one is, I think, a huge amount of work's gone into this and we saw it when we did our own hearings. It seems like there's a dichotomy here. You got the vast majority of the homes, mobile home parks are really fairly decent, then you got a cluster that's a problem. Is, is there a, a plan of kind of like a, a ongoing task force that's gonna review this? Looking at whatever city department's involved, whatever county, I, I mean, I can see social services filing reports also. Is there some mechanism we're trying to set up where we try to highlight, where we're trying to continually improve this situation rather than doing status quo?
I, I think a lot of it's complaint driven at this point. Uh, depending on where the complaint comes from, uh, we'll have to analyze it on a case by case basis. Um, we obviously have at least identified where we got major, uh, you can see on the screen, this, these are all the, the parks that are in our jurisdiction. And you can see in the far right column, uh, the public safety calls to each one of these um, locations with uh, over the last twelve months, the month, the year of twenty-fourteen. And so um, we know where the problems are and we'll continue to keep, keep monitoring those, but um, a- and try to find other ways to address those kind of issues. Again, where we have uh, satisfied tenants and satisfied general neighborhood conditions, um, really nothing to monitor. I mean, there's, there's really, as long as the, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, but um, I, I just can't imagine living in a neighborhood or a house across the street from somebody gets ninety-nine public safety calls last year.
Two a week.
I mean, that's a, there's a problem. There's a problem there. That needs to be dealt with and uh, uh, whether it's, well, even thirty-six public safety calls to my neighbor's house, I'd, I'd be a little concerned about that too. There's uh, there's something wrong. Um, so we, we, we're gonna dive in, explore those a little bit closer, continue to monitor that situation and see if there's other ways that we can fix those problems.
I'm reminded of the little lady that came in here that lived and she reported to the city that there was something going on strange in her neighborhood and she had lived there an awful long time. I think most of you remember the little lady we're talking about. And she reported it and she came back to tell us that they had handled the problem and her neighborhood was as nice as she wanted it to be now. So it can be done. I mean, but you, you gotta have a plea to the public out there to report these kind of things. They can't ride by and complain about it and not tell anybody about it, so.
Anyone else? Any other items of discussion to be brought up to our commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll move that we adjourned.